So I'd like to welcome everyone to your village board meeting in September 22nd, 2022. Doing the honors tonight of the pledge is our friend Nicholas Matola. At this time, I ask everyone to please rise and pledge allegiance in moment of silence and honor of manner. Cola Bello, who was the battle of Kansas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Nick, it's been awhile since we've seen you. Have you been married? Have you gotten married yet? I don't see a ring on that finger. Okay, how is school going? Good. Did last year's school year go well for you? So, thank you for coming tonight. I am not going to make this a regular thing because I would never make anybody a deputy mayor because nobody should have to go through what anybody up here goes through. Well, deputy, deputy mayor today, Tavaa Maguente. We do have something for you that trustee Corelli will give you. And believe me, I just want to say this therapy is, he's going to give it to you. I've sought much, you know, psychological therapy because he's about to get up there. And medication because what he's handing me was a trigger for me. It's from Los Central. Is this your first day here? Thank you, Nick. Alright, so before we begin, I'm going to introduce your village board. To my left is trustee Graziano, next to him is trustee Corelli. On special assignment with power is trustee Suriyam, who joins us virtually. Next to me is my deputy mayor, Tara Birick, and to my right is village clerk Hopman. And of course, it is I, the mayor. So we will jump right in with public comment on agenda items only. Does anybody have anything that's on the agenda that they wish to speak about this evening? Going once, going twice. Sold. Alright, moving on to administrative business. So can I please have a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of our meeting held on September 8th, 2022? Any discussion? All in favor? Village clerk Hopman, can you please read abstract seven?
Sure. Abstract seven, page out was 220584, 220677, and it holds 279.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, moving right along, village clerk Hopman had read the abstract. So, the excitement is over. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve abstract seven as read?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, fire department request. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve fire department request? Number 26 of 2022 totaled in approximately $9,547 for the purchase of pagers and batteries. And request 27 of 2022 totaled in approximately $4,925 for purchase of fast cat and scot water. And Stu seconded. All in favor? Budget modification to the building. Can I please have motion in a second to approve a modification to the budget of the building by increasing A36204630 computer software by $250 and decreasing A3620.411 office supplies by $250. I'll second it. All in favor? Alright, old business. Any old business the village board trustees wishes to discuss? I'm going to take that as a no. Okay, new business. PFAS class action authorized me, the mayor, to sign all documents related to it. So, back in the 60s, manufacturers had used uncle, her, floral chemicals. How do you say that word? Okay, there you go. Look, I didn't have that part in there. In a variety of products, including fire private foam. This foam is used all around the country for fires and more often for training purposes to prepare for emergencies. Manufacturers have volunteered to phase out using PFCs several years ago, but legacy contamination continues to be found in drinking water systems. A multi-district litigation has been created and the village of Woodburg would be joining this class action suit. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign any and all documents necessary to join this class action suit? Seconded by Nick. Discussion, Kelly, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think so.
She did a good job. Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Multi-model program project resolution. So can I please have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as presented, authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance of the state multi-model program B. Eligible course of the capital project and appropriating funds. I'll make the motion. All in favor? Okay. So, right now, we wanted to talk about the appointment of additional engineers for various projects throughout the village. So recognizing the need to bring in additional help because we've got so many different projects ongoing. The board has interviewed with several engineering firms and we are going to attach two of those firms to two overall upcoming projects. So can I please have a motion in a second to engage the services of Hopman Engineering for the project involving the maintenance and repair of tanks throughout the village?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Tara. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Really, with this agreement is just for this particular project? Is there anything particular that you're kind of looking at there? Because it doesn't extend just to this project.
Working with the planning board, joint board, nothing to do with tanks.
Would that be part of the language of the resolution?
In case you want to appoint him for anything else, then you already know it's a agreement, but specifically, he's only for product design.
You okay with that? So really, if he's going to do anything for the planning board or otherwise, and I'm talking about both of these contractors, they both have to still come back to us to go through that?
You would just appoint them for a project.
Okay, that's right. That's right. Oh, you were doing with this because we weren't doing a RFP. We were just giving it out for that particular project. So once that project is done, if we want him to work on another project, then we have to do this whole thing once again.
That's the whole thing? You would already have a agreement in place? You would just...
Authorize him for that project.
Authorize him for that project. Okay.
Yeah, because it does say as requested.
So can I please, we get a motion in a second there? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now, moving right along, can I please have a motion in a second to engage the services of Magui, Howser, and Essel Engineering for a project involving the communutes for country crossing?
Make the motion.
Right, second? All in favor? See, how one project goes and we'll... Okay, moving right along, approval of proposal for geotechno-investigation for the ridge road bridge repair. So can I please have a motion in a second to employ the services of Carlin Simpson and Associates LLC to do geotechnical investigation and soil warrants to support the structural design for repairs to the ridge road bridge? Okay, seconded by trustee Birick. All in favor? Alright, moving right along, an additional item for the approval of smart covers. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a proposal for the purchase of smart cover remote sewer monitoring system total in $27,690. All in favor? And I think that's it. Other than the drama right there, we were coasting on a wall. Okay, so now, it's our favorite part of the program where we ask the public if they have anything they wish to speak on. And...
Probably not on what we just saw.
And I didn't have my glasses on, so I didn't see much of it at all.
The first time was much worse.
Yeah.
It's great.
I can rewind it.
And nobody brought any pillows onto the screens. That was a bit slow. Okay, starting with the first row. That would be you. Go to the podium. You have to introduce yourself. Hopefully, you've brought some pastries.
I didn't know we could have such entertainment. My name is Ed Thury. I live in Timber Ridge 2. And I had a few items I was kind of requesting here to see if we can get them resolved. I kind of ordered them in likely success. There is a sidewalk that goes from Route 32 up to Linden. So that covers... Now, when that was built, there was nothing on that sidewalk except forest. But now there is a commercial property, it's two home... And also there's Timber 3 and 4. Somehow, there was an agreement made here that we have to shovel it from the snow. And it caused quite a bit for us. We're trying to do a lot of things in that community because things are getting old. So I was wondering if we could get a little help with this. I mean, the town repairs the sidewalk.
Okay, so if the town repairs the sidewalk, this is not us, right? If it's on that...
Not the town.
So it's not the village that repairs the sidewalk?
Okay.
We don't do snow removal on sidewalks?
When those sidewalks were installed for Timber Ridge, the agreement was if we install them, you would maintain them. That was always the agreement. That's why whoever, I think it's Remedals, maintains those? No, we have, we have somebody that can maintain. Well, I think it's part of children. Well, yeah, they did it. They both have to pay for this, but yet the village repairs. Well, we return it for it, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, is it, I mean, is it that hard to go clean that snow up there? It is because we don't have the equipment that does the sidewalk.
And honestly, Ed, when they're doing the snow removal, their priority is the roads. It is just the roads. We don't do any sidewalks in the village.
We don't do any sidewalks. So who does the sidewalk on Route 32?
The town does. The town, building and grounds does.
But the town doesn't do any rural, private, any municipal roads, just 32 because of the, we're going to de-occupy. And they do Dunn River because of the school.
Because it's a safe way to school.
Because it's a safe way to the school.
I actually thought they do a piece in this, that's called...
They do a piece that's called "The School." Anytime, anywhere where the kids have to walk to school, they do that and then they return it too because the state doesn't do it.
So we don't, you have someone look back in the agreement when those sidewalks were made? We might even have a copy of that. We can... I don't want to have that because, you know, people, well, they are mostly the new residents. Well, your HOA or your management, oh, it should easily have a copy of that. Archway? He should have a copy of that. He was involved in it.
We found out the hallway, Rob, that they don't really, like, they're ass builds, they're everything.
I understand, but Archway management was actively involved in that. It was all been on those. Archway's been there a long time. Well, they've only been out and engaged for about 10 years, so. Right, but that would, really, that sidewalk would probably be based on what? Well, alright, so if we can't get it from them, I like it. We would, if there was an agreement that was written down in the neighborhood, I'm sure we could find it.
And I could look for it. I could have the building report. We find it.
Yeah, follow it over.
Yeah, I think we could follow that. That's fine. Are we still, are we repairing those sidewalks at all?
We just use them repaired like a, so many contact machines handling everything that...
We're not technically responsible for the repair, if you mean anything.
What's that?
We're doing the repairs of the sidewalk anyway.
We installed it.
Okay.
We're not, we're repaired, we're responsible for the upkeep of the sidewalk, but not of the snow removal. Were you allowed to close the sidewalk?
And that would be up to your HOA, correct, Kelly?
I would think so. I have some agreement, but I would think that you'd be able to leave it to the HOA. If they're owns the property, it's immediately a change of the sidewalk.
Well, what about the other two, the other two developments there?
Sidewalks and that, they don't do anything.
David's in the sidewalk, three and four are just in the sidewalk, the commercial property is in the sidewalk. How do we get tech involved?
Probably for negotiation on the property manager. I'm not sure. I had a thinking.
Did we get any, did we get any input on those two developments being put in there that cut into the sidewalk?
So what Ed is saying, because the development subdivisions were approved in there, and I don't know what went on during the planning board process with that. I think that was prior to leaving board that's in place now. So I don't know what was agreed upon with that.
I don't know. I don't understand what he's saying.
They have a subdivision that went through those sidewalks, just cut into them and then they built it out.
There's more people using that stretch of sidewalks than that of just us. There's two developments that actually drive through, the sidewalks were cut, so they can get into those developments. But you have to walk back the sidewalk backwards originally. Yeah, 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 but I'm saying that now there's other people using the sidewalk and somehow we're stuck with the possible everyone using. There's more people using it. So who's paying for the sidewalk right now?
Big 2?
Yeah. Well, why wasn't three and four brought into negotiations if they were already there? And five for that matter. And well, I'm more concerned about the new developments because they're right along the sidewalk. But you can't hold a new development liable and not three, four, and five.
Kelly, does that ring a bell at all with the sidewalks and that subdivision?
No, that was like, that was the town. And I was just trying to go through old things on my laptop to see if I could ever grab them. Like, don't have anything, but it's that agreement sees the light of day. If somebody could have them on, we could say, oh, yeah. We were like, darn, at least have a better...
So maybe renegotiate with those people paying in on this thing?
Problem for us is that we just don't have the manpower or the equipment to maintain those sidewalks ourselves. Well, that's a whole other ball.
I'm just confused. So you want the built professional building down below and then the new house development to be brought in on the... But you don't want three, four, and five brought in then? Well, I mean, you can do that too. I don't care. You know, I don't know what's available for us to do. Right.
Why don't we take the whole agreement and then report back and we'll just figure out what happens on it? That's all we can do right now is like, I have to see.
Alright, so the second mystery. The streetlights on Timber Trail, they go up to one and stop and then they start again with three. And somehow, between one and two, there were no streetlights on Timber Trail.
Once again, that would be part of the approvals for that project from whenever it was. And O and R would be, it's not something we maintain anywhere, I think, in terms of streetlights.
So that's right.
Probably would be O and R. You'd have to pull O and R if you wanted to get something installed there.
But what we have done historically, the procedure to do is you would have to provide me with a poll number of where they want each streetlight added. You would also have to get a sign off from any property owner within sight view of said streetlight that they're okay with the streetlight being installed there. Because, you know, otherwise we get calls, there's a light now shining in my bedroom. And once you do all that, then we send it to O and R and they get a quote from the board to prove whether or not they want to install the light and how much it would be. But it has to be on a stretch, a pool that can support the additional light.
Oh, so if there's no poles, there's no light?
If there's no poles, then there's no light. Because that could be how your development was constructed as approved by the planning board back when it was done.
Ed, where are you talking about there's no lighting between one and two? No, between, between one, the end of one to the end of three.
So two and three have on Timber Trail, have no light?
No, no, we light it with these dumb lollipop lights. I mean, this, you know, cars are boogying through there pretty quick, man. People, that's much busier, yeah.
I know, I've received a couple of calls, like, speaking through Timber Ridge. It's like a speedway.
Could you call the PD to see if they can put up that speed sign that they've been putting around to?
I was going to ask about that. I mean, that's PD.
You gotta speak to Chief Watson. He's been to Chief Watson. I know they get phone calls from different developments and they do move it around.
Alright, so no pole, no light. So that's...
Yeah, there's no holes there. They can't put a light in it after one, all the infrastructure from one to the other. And that's going to be tens of thousands of dollars.
Right. Yeah, no, it's all, yeah. And number three, it's just, I was supposed to you about the tree grant, if it ever comes to pass?
Yes, we did, we did tree grant, tree reforestation. Our grant writer sent us that. We are very interested in it. I did respond back that we were interested in it because we have several areas. We're kind of compiling areas that can use sort of that reforestation. So if you know of an area, Ed, give it to me and I'll add it to our list and hopefully we come through with it.
So I can send Timber Trail on there between certain, certain areas? Because we lost all the trees there because they were ash trees.
Doesn't that property be owned? Yeah, it's a property.
People, what if they, what if they sign off?
You have to check the grant. A lot of grants have to be part of the by the village. If we don't own the property, we can't get it right.
We could get a light on top of the tree.
We can devise there. Maybe we put a sidewalk in front of the tree as well.
You know, you could check with Orange and Rockland through your HOA to see if you can do spotlighting. I bet the reservoir, the town has spotlighting that Orange and Rockland installed for them off of like a existing building and whatnot. So this, which would be cheaper than doing the pole. I don't know if you have any type, I don't know how your HOA is set up. If you have a community area on the outside of the building that you could put a spotlight.
It actually does. One of it, but do they tap it into their law? Do we pay for it?
You would set up a special street lighting account, like you would a laundry account for your own unit. But I don't, I don't, you'd have to check with O and R or H O A. I'm sure Mr. Schenkel would let me do that for.
Thank you, Ed. That's it?
Over three.
Well, you have some direction on something.
I'm looking to the reforestation. Anyone else in the first row? Second row? He's got prepared notes. How are you doing tonight?
Great tolerance. High Lake Estates.
I introduce you.
Pretty good?
Yes.
Before I start, I'm going to mention a couple things about myself. I belong, because of my comments coming up, need to mention this. I belong to a police family, you know, uncle's cousins, myself, 25 years veteran of NYPD. Seventeen, I didn't tend it. And I have been a family member to, or currently work in NYPD or other police agency in the state or in the United States. So I come before you today to ask you for help. The community I live in, High Lake Estates, had not had police service over two plus years. We're very pleased. We refuse to come without help. Now, there is a civil lawsuit in court between High Lake Estates and the police department. But, police department, from what I know, as a 25-year veteran, when you take the oath of, you know, the oath to serve and protect, it's to serve and protect the entire community, not just part of our community, partial community. You can't pick and choose who you want to serve and not serve in the police department. When you call the Woodburg Police, they'll tell you that they don't serve High Lake Estates and they'll refer you over to state police. I'm not sure if you're aware or not, state police takes a bit longer to respond to any job in High Lake Estates because obviously they, they're a lot busier than Woodburg Police. So that's an issue there because you're endangering people's lives if they do the service for health reasons or whatever the case may be. So we've been going through it for two and a half years now. And we try to talk to, you know, town board members. They don't want to meet. Supervisor doesn't want to meet. So we have 168 homes there in High Lake Estates. They're not being serviced. You've got tax papers that are not being serviced by Woodburg Police. And to me, personally, that's a leave. You can't do that. You can't pick and choose who you want to serve or community you want to serve or not serve. Now, we're, I believe, we're probably the most diversified community in Woodburg. We have religion-wise, we have Catholics, Jews, Muslims, atheists. We have blacks, white, Chinese, everyone that lives in our community. And we feel like a stepchild. You know, we're not being treated the same as the rest of the community, which is not right. Give me a second, look at my notes. So just, like I already referenced NYPD for my experience. We just imagine NYPD officer telling you to commander, "I'm not going there because I don't like them, they don't like me. Don't, he's not going to go there." Can't do that. You just can't do that. You're there to protect and serve the entire community. Now, I don't blame the officers. They're probably following an order from, you know, the higher authority, the chief or whatever the case may be, whether it's legal or not legal, you know. Now, members of my community have reached out to politicians to try to resolve this. And it seems to be a political issue also. Now, Kiguchiari, she was, she was at our development when she was running last election, shaking hands and looking for votes and everything. We haven't seen a sentence. Haven't seen a sentence. And I know one of them, a member of the community reached out to her and crickets. So, I know, me personally, I reached out to several of you guys. And I know you go, tell me, you might want to let them know what you said regarding this issue. And I know you guys are not in charge of the police department. So, but we are your constituents. You know, you're supposed to, you know, so.
I went, I spoke to supervisor and I offered to be the, since I live there and I'm not part of the town, part of the village, I offered to be the intermediary between the two parties and to facilitate the meeting and try to get people together. I didn't make it all, right, not take it all. But I did all. I did ask.
And you know, and you know, because we met back in February. We had a meeting here and that was one of the issues that was brought up, was what we can, what the village can do. And as CJ said, I said the same thing. They're not... I said the same thing. They're not under our purview, but it's a conversation that I can have. And I did have that conversation with the supervisor on two occasions and he seemed interested in, in sitting down and getting out from under. And, and I even know Vic Forelli had a conversation with the supervisor a few weeks ago as well, about the same situation. So we have, we've listened and then we've seen, tried to see what we can do. Um, you are our residents, you've always been supportive of the village board. It's unfortunate that the police department is not under our purview. Uh, I don't know where I can go from here with it. Because like I said, I had, we've, three out of, three of us here have had conversations about it. In an attempt to at least get people to the table. So, I don't know what I can do as a mayor. I can try to have a conversation with supervisor again. Uh, maybe we can send a, um, I don't know, correspondence, now, the village's position on this.
Now, the supervisor was in charge or the chief Watson was in charge?
They're the police commissioners.
Yeah. But who, 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 who was? Is it supervisor or chief Watson? I mean, I.
I would think the commissioners are the ones who set the policy for the department, but I don't, I don't know if that's the change.
So Chief Watson doesn't have a, uh.
I don't.
Yeah, I, well, you said they're not, it's different how we do things here with our departments. Over there, they have a police commission, which is basically made up of each of the town board members. So they have four police commissioners. And after every one of their board meetings, they usually have a police commissioners meeting. So, which is where they decide on new hires or the new contract for the, the chief Watson just received and whatnot. But like I said, I don't know what to exactly say because we met, I heard your concerns and I did address them. And I, and I did go over them with you. I said, hey, listen, I put it out there, he seemed interested. I even gave him your phone number. So.
Our community is being held hostage. Now, for whatever personal reasons or political reason, whatever the case may be, it's not right. And you know, you tell me anywhere in New York State or in this country where, uh, a police department can dictate who they serve and don't serve. You tell me anywhere in this country. Last I checked, you know, I was in America. You know, so you tell me anywhere, but it seems to be in this town. But it, it, it's not like that. You can pick and choose who you want to serve and not serve. We pay taxes just like everyone else.
Listen, I understand your frustration. I feel for your concerns there and that was why I did address them with supervisor. What I can do is try to address them again. If, if I have to go to the police commissioners, I'll do that as well. So I could try going to councilman Tim Finnegan or councilwoman Luchiani and seeing if I can appeal to her that this is an issue that does need to be addressed.
Have any, anybody gone to a town board meeting?
Which is what my next statement is gonna be. Hey, I, listen, I always tell people, come to my meetings, I have no problem with it, nobody comes. Nobody comes. I do appreciate you coming here and expressing your concerns. It's important to me that you do that. At the end of the day though, with this, with the police department, you're gonna have to attend their next meeting and at least express that to them. In the meantime, what I will do is at least try to reach out to the supervisor once again and then the three other board members, police commissioners. And see, just the least about getting you guys to the table. All right?
I don't mean it's next Thursday, not till.
No, they don't mean next Thursday. So they have no more meetings since September. Their next meeting is not till October. October sixth, sorry.
And on second point, now that you have the approved, the approved original, uh, is there a timetable for that or?
We, we are working through that. I don't have, Rob has some meetings this week coming up. Uh, I will let you know that we are looking into a temporary, at this point, as a possibility. Just so we can get this thing open sooner rather than later and then deal with it in the new year. Um, so there's a lot of moving parts. This, what we approved today goes back to the original fix. But at the same time, we're also working on potentially a temporary fix, which would be like a temporary original. It is not necessarily the way we want to go, but it'll get this thing resolved so that we can all get through the winter and then deal with it in the spring or the summertime. We just had some delays with the D C, we've had some delays with our consultants. So it's just been a perfect storm. Yes.
All right, so you, so you, so you say.
We're moving along. And, and I have next meeting, I have no problem coming there, your HOA, HOA meeting and giving another update like I did a few months back. So, just keep me in the loop. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Jesus could not be here tonight, so sorry. I know you were asking about.
It's his birthday.
But it's his birthday, I know. Yes. Okay. Anyone else in the second row?
And introduce yourself. Hi, my name is Leanne O'Vegian and I also live in Highland State.
You can have a spot last night, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You have to start off.
Yes, O L A M I J U.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna piggyback off of that part seven. Uh, it really has become a, a safety issue. So I didn't actually know about it until I really experienced it, uh, about, I would say a year ago. I was not feeling well, I was home alone and my daughter was trying to reach me. I was out of school, you know, I was on vacation, I was out of school. My daughter tried to reach me several times, could not reach me. She called the Woodbury Police to say, can you do a little check on my mom? I did not speak with her today. I'm really worried. I know she was not feeling well. And she was still called the state police. You know, uh, like I said, where in America does this happen? I've seen many communities where they have been stripped between the community and the police. And yet, those brave men and women still would go back into those communities to protect and serve, even though people were pushing back and, you know, not, um, being fair, treating them fairly. But yet they continue to do their job, right? I have friends and family who are also police officers and they take their jobs very seriously. So it really is shocking to me and to all the people in the community that in these United States, that many of us are immigrants and came here to the United States to feel protected and to feel safe. And, and this is what's happening. So I really want to communicate the urgency, the urgency of this matter, right? We've been talking about it for some time, but now we have got to do something. If, if we have to bring it to the attention of the larger, the community at large, then maybe we need to do that because I think if people in other parts of New York know that this is happening, it would be shocking. If you were to tell someone who lives in the Bronx that, you know, that's why in our community, the police will not come in. Because, you know, in New York City, the cops do work very hard and they just go there to protect the community. So, you know, I'm just urging you, um, so please try to expedite this matter. We are gonna come together to come up with our own plan. But whatever you could do, you know, as leaders in this community, we really would appreciate it because someone could lose their life. It's a safety issue. It's a great concern to us. You know, we have families. We want to feel safe. We've invested in this community. We bought property, we paid taxes. We want to feel safe and we love the community. We love the community. And we just want to feel protected and supported by the police.
Thank you, dear. Anyone in the third row? Anyone in the back? No, reserved for the. Okay. So moving right along to, uh, to board comments, starting with Mike Pinella.
Uh, good evening, sir. Uh, nothing.
You got nothing? Nada?
We're good, sir.
All right, you got it. Chief Burke is not here. I think he's not here. Superintendent Rob White, Highway.
I'm not crying, I have something in my eye.
My balls are sweating.
Maybe I'm crying a little. I don't have anything.
Bill Torkpappen.
I just want to thank the individuals that worked in our election earlier this month and, uh, the two hundred people that came out to vote. Yeah, we got, we got, that's going on. Rob White is the closest. Uh, there's more that came out to vote. And as a reminder, there is another election coming up. It's always the first Tuesday in November, followed by the first Monday. It's a little confusing this year. Um, so the next election in town and village will be November eighth. And we'll vote, we'll partly vote, not wish it to be all around.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to board comments. Uh, trustee Suriello, who's joining us virtually. You have anything for this evening?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Uh, trustee Graziano.
All right, I have a few comments tonight. Uh, first one is, I want to thank Senator Scoopis for the grant and the provided ability for the, for House of Government. Good to him and, and I'm glad to see, you know, our politicians getting us money that we need for local profits, so I really want to thank that. Uh, secondly, I have to, and, you know, I heard everybody here from the perspective of, the way I look at it, there's, there's two things that are on my mind. One, I was elected by the people to serve the people, so I've always listened and I always do my best to do that. I also have a tremendous amount of respect for law enforcement generally. I always will. That's just part of what's in my blood and, and I do have respect for all my professional services. That being said, I will say that this is getting to the point where it's silly. I can get offer my services as a neutral party. I do live there, but I'm neutral in this matter. I would, would be willing to facilitate a discussion between the board and all boards, let's just put that, at least start the discussion. So again, I would ask, that's what I wish for the supervisor to kind of offer to sit down, at least start the discussion. Because, you know, the way I look at it is, you know, somebody gotten in a boohoo with us or with Rob, he's not gonna refuse to plot the street. It's just not gonna work, so. And it's just something that I, I just, I understand both sides of it and I would be willing to be a neutral party, kind of bring, bring everybody together and have that discussion. So I offer that out there. You, Ed, you know, and, and everybody on this board understands he feels their pain and understands what we're doing. We will do what we can do. I can't, none of us can promise anything up here because they're not under our purview, but we can continue to have this discussion and try and get this settled because it's beyond ridiculous. That's what I have.
That's it? Trustee Forel.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. I want to jump on with trustee Graziano said, and one of the Senator Scoopis for the grant that he gave us, for fire department and for others, very nice. Greatly appreciated, so I can't thank you enough. I'm also very concerned about the lack of police support between a half years. When I was listening to the comments, I'm thinking, what if there's a major issue up there? What if there's a house fire? What if there's a heart attack? Or what if a pregnant woman goes into labor and you can't get the police up there to help out that? That's really on my mind here. So if there's anything I can do to help, please, uh, like trustee Graziano said, it's not under our jurisdiction, but I'd be willing to do whatever I can to help to get it, like to get, to get trustee Forel. Uh, I think you used the word, I knocked that out. It's, it's crazy what's going on. And then lastly, and I'm surprised trustee Graziano did not bring this up, I thought we were bringing up Florida.
But I know.
There's still, there's water, there's still a water issue going on in the village, okay? We've had some rain the last couple of weeks, it's not nearly enough. So there, so the restrictions are still in place. So please don't be fooled by the amount of rain that you're seeing. It hasn't made a bad thing through our situation, so please continue to conserve water and follow the restrictions. And that's my comments.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Usually it is a very short, you know, unless you get them on the charts as long as they pull through. That's variable.
All right, that'd be mayor of the year. I'll be very, very sure.
Thank you, Senator Scoopis, that's number three. Um, we have a huge issue with our emergency services and this is just one step in trying to fix the gap that we currently have um, with second firehouse. Um, so thank you for listening to us and, uh, coming up with a meaningful solution. I think it's, it's nice bipartisan support with, with Andrew and the mayor and Senator Scoopis, so thank you. Um, if there are any water grants available, we'd be really interested in those. I know there's a lot of that going on, so keep looking for us. Um, and to the Highland State's residents here, um, my heart was out to you guys. I do have a relative, very dear relative of mine who lives in your community and I, um, I know what you're going through because I hear it all the time. And my, um, my hope was always that, you know, I have a young niece that lives there. And I never understood, I mean, what if something happens and fuck the bed, this is lots of children playing in the streets and cars speeding up the, it was always a fear of mine. So thank you for articulating your concerns. Um, many of us share in them. And I will do whatever, I, I, I want to believe that we are dealing with reasonable people on all sides. And if the right people brought to the table, that a solution can be drawn. Um, I don't think anybody wishes malice upon anyone else and I just think it's, it's really a meeting of the minds that has to happen. Um, so I think you have a commitment from all of us. And I want to believe that on the other side, you know, with the town board, you have the same commitment, um, again, articulating the way you did here tonight. Um, with our help, I think we can, we can help there. So thank you for bringing our attention on a larger level, so thank you.
And piggybacking that, so I will, I know, but I do appreciate you coming in. You were both were very well spoken about. Uh, I think that we all understand your concerns and I did, like I said in the first minute back in February. So we will take up the gauntlet, we'll take up the, and just see what we can work out. Uh, see if we can get them to the table and at least get conversation moving forward. I always consider the, the people of Highland State more than just constituents. Uh, you've all been friends since the day I first decided to run for election in two states. So it is something I do want to deal with. Uh, on another note, I also want to echo what my board members had said about Senator Scoopis. Since I've been mayor for these nine months, there is nobody that has has been a bigger assistance to me on that level than Senator James Scoopis. This quarter of a million dollar grant that we received from the firehouse will be put to good use, but this is the third grant we received this year alone. I think we've, Senator Scoopis has come through with my term of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the residents. So, yes, I did ask him about water grants, to see what we can come forward with. But, uh, once again, I do, anything, drop in the bucket. Okay, so let me start by thanking, uh, the Woodbury volunteers, our fire department for the nine eleven ceremony this year. Once again, they've kept the tradition going of honoring all those live laws on that day. So I do want to thank them. On the note of the fire department, I want to congratulate town councilman Tim Finnegan, who tied the knot and at the same time has also promoted. It's been a battle week ahead because he's now been promoted in the fire department to be tenant. So congratulations to him on both counts. Uh, this coming weekend, ladies and gentlemen, uh, on Sunday's a busy day. So on Sunday, September twenty fifth, will be the Out of the Darkness Community Walk. This is done to remember those who have lost, we have lost and let others know they are not lost. So that's Sunday, September twenty fifth at ten AM at the Res. Uh, also going on that day at ten o'clock is the blood drive and they are desperate for blood donors. So it's ten to four, it's at the St. Patrick's Gym. They have plenty of open slots, so please take advantage of it. And while you're there, the Knights of Columbus will be hosting their annual parish picnic, which come in, donate blood, or grab a hot dog, a hamburger, jump on the bouncy house, doesn't matter how old you are, enjoy yourself for the day. Uh, okay, so I wanted to touch on the special election and some of the comments that came up on Facebook. And I don't usually address them, but I wanted to tonight. So, I think a lot of what came out of there was the, I guess, an accusation of lack of transparency by this board about this special election. And I do take offense to that because I feel like we have gone above and beyond to be as transparent as possible here, this board. When we put a local law into place, that local law is put into paper, that local law is put on our website and more often than not, I will put it on our Facebook page, which has over 1,600, uh, fans, whatever you want to call it. When I took that over three years ago, we were at 300. So, we made it a priority to kind of get information out that way. But those local laws are placed there. Our agendas are placed there. We are the only board that does that. We have to see another municipality that uses social media to get out what they do. Those agendas are also made available on our website. Every meeting is recorded, every meeting is on YouTube. All the minutes are available on our website. The special elections talked about over and over and over again because there were various items on each of these agendas, or weeks on it, months on it. And they were announced at every village and town board meeting. For example, the village board. So, uh, short of hiring a skywriter or maybe carrier pigeons to get the message out, I think we've always done a good job of being as transparent as possible. So, that ends, uh, the, this board, in my time on board, we have changed them to the beginning of the meetings from 7:00 to 7:30, allow for people to get home from work, throw down food and have people attend our meetings. We've had two public comment periods at every meeting. And until today's mess, we are one of the few municipalities that are doing their meetings in this hybrid fashion, which allows you to sit at home in your PJs or, or some of the people on the video or you can sit and do that as well.
No.
Okay, just don't, don't let us know what's going on. But we have been more than transparent. What I'm going to do, what I'm going to try to do is this, because I understand people's concerns. We had a special election, we actually thought and did pretty well with the amount of bodies, um, that came out for it. Though it's kind of discerning to see 9,000 registered voters here and we only had 270 bodies that showed up for something that was about our volunteers and about just putting policy in place for the future. So, my game plan, moving forward, to try to extend as much as we can, because I cannot leave, I can't drag a horse to water to make a drink. I can't force anybody to watch our meetings. I can't force them to attend. This is the largest attendance we've had at a meeting, other than the moratorium meeting, which the place was filled with baskets. So, nobody comes to our meetings and I'm kind of surprised because we are handling water and your soup and your roads and your fire and your building code. So, like I said, we try. I, I try, other than offering, like I said, patients. So, here's what I'm gonna try to do. Uh, for starters, I met with all teams. The franchise agreement with the cable company is now with the village of Woodbury. The Channel 22 that existed for many years was halted when the construction began at the courthouse. My goal is to, and I've already met with them, they've already seen the equipment at the courthouse and they didn't hear. So, I am going to investigate as much as possible, bringing back Channel 22 uh, and actually targeting my inner Brandon Tartikoff, who nobody will know who that is, but where it, it will be the village board meetings, the planning board meetings, the town board meetings, you'll have the strolls, all the local events going on. And then what I hope to do is work with the, probably the AB Club. I don't even know if it's called that, but that's what we called it back in my day, of a high school. And just see about putting the vignettes together, local businesses, um, how-tos in terms of how the, the planning and zoning board process works so that people aren't screaming about, oh, the village is approving, I don't know, a meatpacking district on top of St. Patrick's Church or something, I don't know. But what will be the underlying, the one thing that may stop that is the cost involved in all this. But it is my goal, I think that hopefully will allow people to be more involved in what we do. At least they'll know what's going on, but it's the best I could basically do. The other thing I'm trying to do is, is maybe separate the village from the town in terms of the monthly newsletter. Uh, I talked to Vic Porelli about this, reestablishing Woodbury Gazette. The town and village really do exist on two separate levels. Uh, their departments do not mesh with ours. We are handling the police and libraries and whatnot. What the village handles is a bit more complicated and maybe it does take a separate newsletter to get that information out there. So, it is Food for Thought, Clara, who handles the newsletter for town and village, that's a fantastic job. But maybe we just need to have a better way of getting that information out there. So, we are working on this. I don't know what else I can add to that argument, but just cut us some slack. We try our best to get the information out there as best as possible and we just need people to pay attention. What's that? Oh, yeah, well, like I said, we even tried to code red it. And I don't know how many people have signed up for that.
Not as many as I'm beginning.
Yeah, so it's been one of those things that, it's a code red system. Really should be for emergency purposes and whatnot and you can sign up for it. Unfortunately, now enough residents sign up for it. It's almost like the cattle law, right? None of the people have signed up for that. So, we are trying to collect email addresses and whatnot so I can better, we can better serve the community. So, I just ask that you're a patient and quite honestly, I'm always available. I think anybody who knows me knows how they could reach out to me via Facebook or a call here to the retall. Most of you have my phone number, so I very rarely will put you in a voicemail. Or I will and will call you back later, but we are trying, so. Anything, anyway, so that's all I got. Yes?
Have you thought about live streaming on YouTube? I mean, it's cheaper and you can, and people can watch it at any time they want.
We did, we used to live stream on Facebook and Facebook made it very difficult. We former mayor had difficulty-
You still can't connect.
Still can't connect. So, we were trying in Facebook Live, we thought was the way to go and we had so much more participation.
Yeah.
Um, but it just, they've forgotten more than I'll ever know about electronics. I'm still trying to learn how to program an ECR, so, but they can't do it.
Give that up.
Yeah, well, how does it know it's an ECR?
Just stop it.
No, she just said that, yes.
Mayor, when you're talking about all this and channel, I'm sure you're talking about public access.
There you go, PEG, they call it PEG, Public Educational-
I'm a filmmaker and I got my start when I was a kid at a public access helping institutions. So, I'm a believer in public access, you need another system.
That would be, Deli, that would be very well. Because like I said, I think what we can do with it is a day in the life of trustee Graziano.
Yes.
And I think people would love to see that.
But remember, you have to pay for your subscription to get it.
Yes.
If you have a direct TV or you just use all of the apps that are out there now, you won't get it.
So, it's like-
That's why we kind of gave it up.
I understand.
And hoping it works this time.
Yeah, but the town has got a network provider to give it to the non-Plum in town and they have to provide that station.
Yes, but there is a cost that's associated with it because I have to get equipment, I have to get an electrician in.
Maintenance of the program.
Yeah, so there is some cost in which I have to balance that with a budget.
Well, let's, I'd love to discuss it further because-
I would love to discuss it further, yes. Because CJ wants to do a whole series on proper polling help, so.
You shouldn't joke about that, that's a link.
Oh, yeah, CJ says it all the time. Okay.
What's my last question?
Yes.
A lot of people ask me, why did we go on the water restriction completely and my road did what? Did we have different?
Yeah, I couldn't answer why my road, but KJ went on the water restrictions. Everybody that I know of had some semblance of water restrictions.
Where, where do you want to get your water from, Pacheco?
Yeah, so I-
The whole area is in a drought, if you look at the drought.
No, I understand. We were just, just repeating something I said at the last meeting. We were down seven inches, uh, over the summer. So, not only do we have to make that seven inches up, but we also need now to make what we normally get in September. So, we're not even close. So, the water restrictions, as trustee Porelli said, will remain in place for the time being, so. Anyway, there you go. With no further business to discuss, the comments received, I will tip the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next scheduled meeting is October 13th. So, then, Woodbury, to get to yourself and others.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.